Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting, June 6, 2018. Commissioner Lundey.
Our inspirational word for the day, warn a divisive person once and then warn him a second time. After that, have nothing to do with him.
Thank you. And this morning, our dog warden has our dog.
Good morning. This is kennel number five, male, about five years old. He's ready for adoption now. We have 26 other dogs in the kennel. I'd like everybody to keep in mind August 4th, we're going to have our second annual Dog Day at the kennel. Last year was great, this one's really, really going to be great, so keep that in mind. It's a Saturday, 10 to 4. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Madam Clerk?
He doesn't want to leave.
Yes.
We have a proclamation. Is Chandel there or is Jeff doing it?
You want to come up? Chandel will do your proclamation first for Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Put you right up in the microphone. I'll read the proclamation and then we'll let you say a few words. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
All right. Matter of proclaiming, June 15, 2018, is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lorraine County, where as Lorraine County seniors are valued members of society and is our collective responsibility to ensure that they live safely and with dignity. Whereas Lorraine County's Adult Protective Services Unit investigates an average of 440 reports of abuse, neglect, and/or exploration of older adults annually, and whereas abuse of older people is a tragedy inflicted on vulnerable seniors and ever-increasing problem in today's society that crosses all socioeconomic boundaries. Whereas Lorraine County seniors are guaranteed that they will be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this community, whereas we are all responsible for building safer communities for Lorraine County seniors. Whereas the well-being of Lorraine County seniors is in the interest of all and further adds to the well-being of all Ohio communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County that we hereby proclaim June 15, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Encourage all Lorraine County citizens to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of its seniors in Lorraine County. Signed by the Board of County Commissioners, Lori Kostowski, Matt Lundey, and myself.
Thank you.
It's on you, Chandel. Introduce yourself and tell us what you do.
So, my name is Chandel Duzenberry and I am currently the supervisor for Lorraine County Adult Protective Services. There is currently eight of us and includes six field investigators, so that would be six people for Lorraine County that did that 444 investigations, one intake person and then myself. We strive to do the very best that we can. That does not come close to the number of phone calls that we would actually get, I would say since October to current. We have received about 2,000 phone calls that we have not been able to go out to either because of age or they haven't quite met the criteria according to the law. I am currently working with the state level to try to change the legislature with Ohio so that we can address more of these concerns and actually see that there's more criminal justice brought to some of these abuses that we are seeing. So, we're very thankful that you are acknowledging this day. We've sold T-shirts this year. We've raised money for our elders in Lorraine County and we have gotten some business cards to bring awareness because financial banks and institutes, they need to start making more referrals so we can stop. We're currently working one on now where the power of attorney has taken about a million dollars from their loved one. So, we're trying to finally file charges and get some justice for this individual who now has no way to care for herself for the remainder of her life.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing, but we, we do it, we have a heart. I have a great team and very thankful for each and every one of them. I'm new as supervisor and so we're just making some different changes and moving forward and seeing what we can do. I've got the ambition, I want to see some changes, so I'm out to get, to have this stopped. It's, it's too much and it's in our backyards and it doesn't, it happens to everyone, so I'm here to stop it as best I can. Not going to stop.
Well, thank you for what you do.
But thank you for acknowledging this and for the years prior. I look forward to the future years.
We actually witnessed firsthand you guys in action, Judy and Avon Lake. You guys got her taken care of and between you and Judge Walther and your whole team, thank you for what you did for her.
You're welcome.
Because this lady was in pretty bad shape, not being abused by anybody, but she definitely needed your services.
Yeah, and she's doing very well now, actually. And that was when I was on the scene, on that one.
Right, right.
So, any court action, I go out to the scene so I can see my workers to make sure because when I present to the judge, he knows that I have, I'm standing behind this, that I want to take the court action because we don't want to have to go to that level, but if we have to, we will. I'm not afraid to take on the difficult cases.
Very proud of how you guys handled that situation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can you share for the community, are there warning signs that you want to call people's attention to, if they're neighbors or people in the community? I mean, because, I mean, you know, physical abuse is sometimes something you can see, but, but are there, there are warning signs that people should look for?
Any type of changes that you see, so if you have an elder adult that's in, and just because they're 60 doesn't mean that they need our services. I think 60 is very young personally, but if you, something has changed, whether there is a new family member that has gotten involved and now they're not outside gardening as much, or you've seen the ambulance coming too much, or they've come over and they said, my utilities aren't being paid, any type of signs, they look disheveled, they're no longer taking care of themselves, someone who that would always have their nails done or they're clean shaved and now they're not. Something could be going on. It could be simple as a UTI or there could be something else that's going on. So, just always, any type of change is always worth giving us a call. We're more than willing to talk and see at the time if there is enough for us to get involved. If not, we put it in what we would refer to as like a potential, call us back and let us know what you see and everything. If they make comments, you know, Johnny keeps coming over and, you know, I bought him that truck and he doesn't come over anymore and that, that's a red flag.
And the folks reporting can remain anonymous?
It is actually by law that I actually keep your information protected and even if it goes to court, I can't share that with Judge Walther. The only time that I'm able to, if it's criminal, but usually police officers, they don't ask for that information, but by law I have to keep your information protected. So, it's completely anonymous.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Proclamation, Chandel? Thank you. Tough job you guys.
We have passion for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the resolutions or the presentation?
No, let's go to the resolutions.
Okay. Under number one, resolutions, investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Preparation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner Kahlo. I do have a number of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with the board, specifically some hiring, possibly the collection center, dog and kennel, crime lab. Also, still working on that purchase of real estate, so I'll update you on that, and also sell real estate and one pending legal matter. All those topics are allowable under Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those matters that I have explained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve the reading of the minutes of May 30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Accept the withdrawal of Brownham Township to clean the Mapleview ditch petition submitted March 13, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Want to talk about this a little bit or why we're doing, because it's, the, as you know, this has been...
Two years ongoing.
Well, it's been a while and the costs have changed considerably, the grant money is not significant enough for the program and the petition that, original petition that we were working on there, and you've done quite a bit of work and that's why I think we need to explain it, didn't allow for assessments within the capital work. Now, we have routinely, as a matter of procedure in the Stormwater District, waived the collections of maintenance fees on ditch work going forward because we have a stormwater fee and I think our resolution says while there's adequate funding, we'll, we'll fund the ongoing maintenance. We make the assessment, we suspend the assessment, but we've had these grant petitions submitted and they've indicated there would be no cost for the capital work. Well, we've run into a bit of a problem with a couple of them, but the gap was small and we've been able to close that gap with some outside assistance, but this one's big and I think Brownham may be counting on a second round of grant money next year to bring that load down a bit on this overall project. I'm not sure because there's, there's grants are submitted, there's a subcommittee that reviews the grants, then they're ranked and then it goes to the SWAC, that's, we've given that authority to SWAC and then there's a recommendation to the Stormwater District Board, et cetera. So, I won't say that we'll get a grant next year, it's not a, it's not a given that they're going, they'll be able to receive the grant, plus it's, would need to be a very large grant to close the distance on, on the funding. So, going forward, I think everybody has to have a clear understanding that some of this capital cost may be by assessment, some of it may be by grant work. So, we need to allow the petition to address that and the last one didn't. We asked the township to make it easy to request to withdraw the petition and then we asked them to refile it, allowing for the potential on the capital assessment. So, that's it in a nutshell. We've done a lot of work, we've had a lot of meetings on that and I didn't want anybody wondering why it disappeared. Now, it's, it's back on the agenda. The question I have for the clerk though, is since it's a new filing of the petition, do we have to go out and do another viewing?
I was thinking that too.
All things start over, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. Hopefully this will be quick, it's redundant, but I, again, well...
It's not going to be quick.
Commissioner, as we, as we've worked through the Stormwater District issues and then it comes to the Board of Commissioners, even though you're, you're in a different role with the Stormwater District periodically, we've tried to make these procedures as easy as possible, but every once in a while we run into an oddity and this was one that didn't conform to the work we were doing before, so, you know, we, we use it as a learning tool and going forward, we won't have these happen again, but sorry about having to go out and see the ditch again, but...
I'd like Mayor Forth over from Vermillion, he did a nice job reaching out to his residents with the cancellation so people didn't take off work and everything, real nice guy and...
Well, and Madam Clerk was here getting the letters out very timely to make sure that people got them over the weekend and on Monday, so Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday was the...
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So, I didn't, I didn't hear that any stray, stray showed up and was angry, so I think it worked out pretty well. So, all the township folks got the, got the word too.
I guess Mayor Forth over reached out to them also.
Well, the township people?
Yes.
Probably. And he does a nice job, but he was on council in that region before he became the mayor, so he has a personalized relationship with quite a few people over there.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Sanitary engineer adopt union standards for sewage improvements dated October 2013 along with the uniform standard sewer details is prepared by the City of Cleveland, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works, and Municipal Engineers Association, Northeast Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Solid Waste, approve the City of Lorraine 2018 community incentive grant funding in the amount of $51,167.29 to purchase recycled content items for the variety of projects throughout the city.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, is Keith here?
I was going to bring him up after the next one.
Oh.
I'll bring you, but you can come up now Keith, we're going to do these two and then you can explain them both.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approve the Village of LaGrange.
They kind of wanted to wait to...
Oh, you did.
Hear what he's going to say on this one? Yeah, and the 51,000, it's, it's a big chunk and no other issue, it's some outstanding...
Do we do? It's still outstanding.
Right.
We can talk about that after Keith talks.
Well, go ahead Keith, tell us about Lorraine Grant and then we'll have you tell us all about LaGrange.
Lorraine Grant, first of all, where's this money come from? Comes from the tipping fees, it comes into my budget and there's a pot developed, the pot is developed based on the previous year's income. That's how we come up with a pot of money and then it's divided among the communities by how much they recycled the previous year. So, they're actually competing for these dollars based on how much they recycled in the previous year. So, that's where it all gets divided out and how they get their awards, all right? City of Lorraine, their numbers are up because it went cart this last year and they're up about 70% in the recycling numbers to give you an idea of when they started the year. So, that's increased the number of dollars that's on the table, or for them.
So, it's automatic.
Right. As we up the amount of money, what, 400 or 450,000 dollars in the grants?
405 is what the thing called for and you gave them a boost of 400 and to 450, which is a $40,000 boost to the pot.
Right. For all the communities, since Lorraine participated in discussion at the Storm, I mean at the Solid Waste Policy Committee was, there was only so much money, but now that Lorraine had jumped in the pool, it was going to dilute everybody and even though other people's recycling numbers were up, just the bulk of Lorraine would give them less money, so we adjusted the...
Adjusted the total amount to 450 instead of 405.
Right.
All right?
So, we can't recoup...
In the pot.
This is not one of our grants, this isn't one of our grants.
Right, but I know, but can't we recoup some of those dollars that are outstanding from the City of Lorraine from this amount?
We can...
As the same pot of money?
We can withhold dispersment until our issue is resolved, certainly. The, so, that's, that's the, that would be the decision of the board, could be the will of the board, it's up to you.
Well, I wouldn't withhold the whole amount, but I would withhold the outstanding amount.
Well, you'd have to withhold it for about five years.
Right.
It's a, it's significant.
That was like 15,000.
It's like 275,000.
Right. Hmm. I thought that was less than that, okay.
So, you know, if we can, we can still have them process and we can still look at their grant, you can still approve their grant, we just want dispers until the other matter is resolved. That's up to you.
I don't know, Lorraine was a hard drive to get into the cart system.
I was going to say now that they're in...
Yeah.
Sooner or later, the other matter has to be resolved.
That's up to the board.
Right.
This is chipped out.
When Sue LaGrange went to and then you can tell us LaGrange too.
All right. Well, to give you an idea, the bulk of their money in Lorraine will be spent on recycled brick. You may say, what are you talking about? Well, this brick comes from deconstruction of schoolhouses, buildings, that's crushed and used on ball dimes. They prefer it to limestone, they prefer it to sand, so a lot of ball fields are now going, you see the red paths, that's brick dust, all right? So, that's where the bulk of their money, they're buying playground mulch, Lorraine is, and some benches and some recycling receptacles and also doing work on their harbor house with recycled wood floors, all right? And Pella makes a recycled window now, so the Pella Pro line out there, I put in my house personally, that has a 26% recycled content in it. So, they're putting those windows in their harbor house, so that's what they're doing with the bulk of their money.
That's where JR does a lot in.
LaGrange, the bulk of their money is going towards stainless steel partitions made out of recycled stainless steel in their bathrooms in the municipal building. I guess they're deplorable and they wanted to replace them and they felt this was an opportunity, that's the bulk of their money. A couple benches and they're advertising the office supplies, which are all allowable under the grant, all right? Now, it'll be reviewed, so, okay?
You've got her.
The, any directions?
I'm not holding anything back.
No, I, I mean, I'm thrilled that the cart program was up and running, just thrilled because it took forever...
Took us years to get them on the cart program, right Keith?
So, and I, I think we can still work through the other issues.
70% increase in the recycling.
They ain't exactly going to stop the cart program and they ain't exactly being very responsive to resolve an issue.
I mean, this is a problem prior to this administration, so it's not like this administration caused this, but, correct, this was prior to this?
It is, it's, it's an aging issue, one that doesn't get addressed.
No, it got addressed, but then we never moved forward with the organics area, so...
Well, again, that was, that was...
I don't need to come.
It was a huge work forward and even then it was questionable whether they're going to be able to uphold their end in my mind.
Oh, no, they had plenty of organics to fill, but...
It's, it's something that needs resolution, but again, it's the will of the board, I understand your direction and we'll proceed.
Do we have a motion on this one yet?
No, we haven't done it yet.
Yeah, you already voted because you had discussion.
LaGrange?
Oh, not LaGrange.
No, LaGrange.
Approve Village of LaGrange 2018 community incentive grant funding in the amount of $5,382.92 to purchase post-consumer recycled content items utilized in the municipality building.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Engineer Men Residence 18237 adopted April 4, 2018, entering to lease to own purchased equipment for Lorraine County Engineers Office through Kansas State Bank. Amendment is to reflect the removal of the case excavator with trailer in the amount of $272,907.64 and replace with another excavator from Gibson Equipment and Cam Superline Heavy Duty Trailer Akron in the amount of $272,115.67 at $38,511.17 for eight years.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
You have the presentation done.
Yep. Come on Jen, tell us all about what's going on at the Visitors Bureau.
Okay. Good morning. Thanks for having me.
Whatever, you ready for your presentation Jen?
I'm ready. Thank you. Okay, in June, it is a really, really, really busy month. We've got a lot going on and what we're doing is we're creating a lot of activity for people that are coming in to town for the summer months. I'm going to start off and then I'm going to actually flip it over to Amanda who's going to tell you some other things that we're working on. We are launching the King of Wings, so thank you very much for your support with the King of Wings. This is a wing battle, a battle for the best wings in Lorraine County. We have eight local restaurants that will be competing for the crown, June 21 through July 1st and what the King of Wings really does is it continues this momentum that we have, is trying to build business in our brand with all the great restaurants that we have in Lorraine County. The wings actually was a real nice niche. We did Restaurant Week, which focused on a little bit of the higher end. We worked on the Burger Battle, which was more that mid-range casual and Wing Joints, it's just kind of those really casual neighborhood restaurants. So, it's a really nice niche and a lot of people were very, very excited about it, but we did encounter some hiccups too. As I said, there's eight restaurants, the participating restaurants will feature their best or most creative wing and that's something that we did a little different. We had a lot of people say to us, well, this is what people come to us for, you know, it's our whatever wing, and so we kind of gave them a little bit more pliability in the decision making, is you put your best foot forward, whatever that may be, something new, something that's been here and is your, you know, true tide wing. So, that was a nice alternative and our restaurants were really excited about that opportunity and they're declaring a competition wing, that competition wing is going to be available for $7 per pound, which is probably a 40% price reduction off the normal menu price approximately depending the restaurant. And additionally, what we're going to do is because wings usually do not get consumed alone, we're actually offering a dollar off select Ohio craft beer. Each of the restaurants can just determine their own offering and we worked with the Ohio Liquor Control to make sure that we were in accordance with Ohio liquor laws as well. Who's in the running here and we did, I'm actually really pleased with our geographic representation here. Avon Brewing Company in Avon, Brickyard Bar and Grill in Oberlin, Erie Burger Company in Avon Lake, The Foundry Kitchen and Bar in Elyria, Just One More Bar and Grill in Avon Lake, Mutton Jeff's in Lorraine, Red Iron in Wellington, and Your Pit Barbecue in Vermilion. As I mentioned, those little hiccups, as you know, one of my biggest struggles is to get all of the menus up front from these folks. With some of the restaurants that are involved, a lot of the owners work two jobs, you know, that this is a, in addition to their regular job, this might be their hobby or their night job, so that made it extremely difficult to get some of the places and get the recipes or their menu descriptions, but as you can see, the Brickyard Bar and Grill, the homemade Jack Cherry Barbecue Jumbo Wings, with Erie Burger Company, we have the Spicy Tapole Ranch, the Just One More is their famous secret sauce there with their rub, and then Red Iron has their famous Smitty Wing. So, those are some of the featured wings that we have. What we did notice with Restaurant Week, that I'm applying a lot of the same principles, is people judge where they're going to go based on the offering. So, I've been really pushing them to come up with something clever and creative and Basically, we changed it a little bit from previous competitions, we've learned a little bit, but they're going to be picking up a ballot at one of the participating restaurants after they order the wings and get their stamp, then they can cast their vote. So, in order for them to have a vote, they must have tried the competition rank wings at those places. There's no wiggling around that, which we found a little, a couple of little holes in the Burger Battle that we're fixing here. You can only vote for one restaurant and as you know, we went through all the votes line by line and I anticipate doing that again with a ruler and a highlighter. Then they will submit their ballot and they can submit it to us, they can submit it at the restaurants, they can snap a picture, the same methods that we've found effective and the restaurant that receives the most votes will be the King of Wings. Additionally, to give the competition a little bit of legs, we have created very similar to a concert style T-shirt, T-shirts for the first 300 people that visit six or more restaurants during this time. And I have a mock-up of the tee shirt I'm gonna show you, but I'm excited about it because not only will it give us some, some brand recognition throughout the year when people wear them, but it also lists some of the, it'll list all the restaurants that participated, which I think is, like I said, it gives it a little bit more longevity and gets people talking about it, helps support our cause. And I should note what people do for tee shirts. We know that. Okay. So, what we're doing to spread the word, we're doing the digital display advertising, which has worked so well for us in the past. Additionally, we're coupling that with advertising in Facebook and Instagram. We're doing the geo-fencing. This time I picked tw- ten, ten wing joints in neighboring communities, counties, and put a fence around them. So, basically, from June first through the end of June, there will be a fence. If you open your phone while you're in those places, you will be caught in our net and you will be served our ad continuously. We are also doing look-alike. We've created a nice little database and we're basically using that database to find people that look like people that have participated in some of our activities in the past and we're going to be serving them our ads. We're mixing that with some traditional media with W O B L and W E O L and also one appearance on W Q A L, which is Cleveland Q one oh four during their very popular morning show, morning drive time, about an eight o'clock appearance, which is, you know, kind of prime, prime time, if you will. We're also going to be leaning on the local papers and some of the local foodie outlets to, by, through press releases. We're going to be on the Cleveland Now Show, which Commissioner Kell, you came on with us for Restaurant Week and it's a, kind of a prepackaged show that they run during the morning and the evening news for us. So, that'll give us some TV exposure. In additional, we're going to utilize our owned social media and the restaurants' owned social media. So, that's their own platforms. This year, we're doing window clings and posters. Because of the casualness of the establishments, we're also doing table tents that sit on the tables of each of those establishments. We're giving them digital treatments so that they can create their own. We're going to, of course, give our Q and A's scripts, directions. I will say that because we're launching this and because of the, like I said, the staff commitments that I have realized and encountered, this might take a little bit of hand-holding with the staff. So, I think I'm gonna have to kind of show up at some of the queue times and kind of help them, train the staff a little bit. So, there's some of the promos. What we learned, and you can see this as we flash through the ads, what we learned is the static ads work really well on display. Those, those have, you know, proved to be twice as effective for us. So, you can see it kind of scrolling through. We actually secured a photographer that come out, to come out for free. Eat Local Ohio volunteered their time to come out to The Foundry, Avon Brewing Company, and Cow House Creamery to take pictures that we could use in social media because professional pictures just go such a long way. You can also see the concert, King of Wings Concert Style Tee up there as well. And of course, we have a landing page that people can go and see exactly who's participating, the hours, pictures of the wings, and the description.
What does the shirt say? Is it got, on the front, is that the names of the participating?
The, the front is the King of Wings and it has that logo. And then on the back is the King of Wings, our logos, and all of the participating restaurants and the city.
What does it say under King of Wings though, on the front there? Oh, that's the back. I'm sorry. Never mind. Never mind. Got it.
Yeah, all the, the copy in the very bottom there is all the restaurants and then the cities. So, you know, just how it says, you know, Led Zeppelin, you know, New York or Marley or Gardens or New York Gardens or whatever it says this is gonna say. Avon Brewing Company, Avon.
Cool.
So.
Nice.
Yes. I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda, who has been the point person on our Here's the Scoop Ice Cream Trail. Let her talk to, talk about the next two initiatives we've been working on.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Here's the scoop is our new ice cream trail, which we kind of fashioned off of the Cupcake Crawl. So, we did something a little different though this time. What you'll see up there is, there are thirteen stops that you get to go to. Two of them are the same family, so Krieg's and K Cream Corner in Lorraine. This year, what we're doing, instead of paper passports where they download off of the site, they actually get these really nice lanyards. And on the back of the lanyards lists all of the stops. So, they have to go to each stop, same as the Cupcake Crawl, purchase their ice cream, and they get a stamp on the back. Different though is they actually get a twenty-five cent off discount when they go to these stops. So, there is incentive to go there and continue on. And we made this from June first to September third, so they have plenty of time to go to all of the stops. So, when they finish, they bring their passport back to us and they actually get an enamel pin, festive commemorative pin, and it's gonna look exactly like the logo here. And we're gonna encourage everybody to hang on to their lanyards for the following year. And then what we'll do different, sort of like how Disney does their pin trade, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it's very popular there, we'll change the pins. So, they'll be collected. So, what you'll see up there is Kathy's Ice Cream, Cow House Creamery, Dairy Grove, Divine Scoops, Hasty Tasty, Hot Dog Heaven, both K Creams, both Krieg's, Scoops and More, Sunday Funday's, and Twist and Shake. So, there are quite a few. Hopefully, next year I can pull in more after this and then we'll have more ice cream places in three months for them to visit. And we have launched this on Facebook already. That's just from May eleventh. It's been up there for quite a while. It's gotten really good feedback. Thirty-one thousand people, as you can see, have already seen it. Nine hundred and nine of them have responded. We've already sold out of lanyards at the Visitors Bureau. We ordered three hundred and fifty of them, based off of how many shirts we had for the Cupcake Crawl. So, that's, we've had a lot of people coming into the Visitors Bureau, purchasing them. And they're only a dollar, so it's not too bad. And there are other distribution sites, so they can go to Krieg's Farm Market, Hot Dog Heaven, Cow House Creamery, Divine Scoops, and Sunday Funday's. And we chose those places because you can go inside and purchase them instead of standing outside of the window where there's usually a lot of traffic. We are doing, for promotion, Facebook advertising, Snapchat advertising, which is new. I'm actually pretty excited about that. We'll see how it goes. And we did a interview with one oh four point one yesterday morning and we did a giveaway for two lanyards and a ten dollar gift card to Cow House Creamery. All right. So, that was Here's the Scoop. This is Shoreline Treasures. Shoreline Treasures is, I think, the first new initiative that is not food-related. And really what it is, is a self-guided tour of all the shopping places in Lorraine County. So, it focuses on vintage, antiques, primitives, anything like that. So, what you'll see is current, we have Be Back Antiques, Countryside, Grammy's Primitive, Jamie's Flea Market, Five Three O Shop, and Treehouse Gallery. And then you'll see on the right, new, that we've added to this lineup, Antiques on the Ridge, Hatchery, Broadway Mercantile, Shea Marchand, Ratty's, and Vintage Rose. And then above that, you'll see, we're turning this into a brochure. So, it's really a directory for anybody who's coming in. They'll pick it up and this is your, this is your tour. You can go to all of these places in this area and they're all listed on a map. So, you'll see the front and the back there. The idea is to explore the shore. We are launching this on June thirtieth. It's a Saturday. And what they'll do is they'll go to Jamie's Flea Market as their starting point. They'll pick up their special bags and the bags will have the Shoreline Treasures logo on it. And with that bag, they'll go to each of these stops and they get ten percent off of one item in store that day. We'll also be listing restaurants on the inside cover of the brochure and that'll be like an encouraging thing, you know, while you're out shopping here, stop at these places and have lunch. So, we picked those geog- geographically to match where the shops are. We plan to promote this with social media, printed media, all the previous things that we've done before. And the brochure is gonna be in print for two years, so we'll reevaluate it at the end of two thousand nineteen, since we're launching it this year.
Did you have a list of the potential stops for lunch at some of the locations?
Yes.
I didn't see it up there. Was it up there?
Yes. Jackalope Lakeside in Lorraine, Bistro eighty-three in North Ridgeville, Cole's Public House in Amherst, Check Please Cafe in Grafton, and I believe there was Treehouse Gallery and Tea Room. And they're already a shopping area too, so.
Did we look at the Black River Cafe in Auburn?
I don't think so.
We talked about it.
We did.
Yeah, I sent, I sent that to you because we were, we, I didn't want to do a chain.
Yeah.
And, and they're, they're a good place for lunch in Auburn, a little bit different twist. We haven't done anything with them yet. So, I, we need to make that contact if we haven't. I did send that to you.
Well, Ratty's is the only one. Ratty's is kind of on the fence. That's our only stop in Oberlin.
Yeah. Ratty's, sorry. Ratty's is on the fence currently. I was just speaking with her yesterday about it and, so we won't know if we're gonna go with that. I'll have to go and talk to her today, so.
Okay. And while we're in Auburn, one of the things, after we lunch, is I wanna work with Auburn College and I wanna see if we can't do something special around the Frank Lloyd Wright House for special hours and get that out regionally. I think that'd be a pretty good draw. It's, it's kind of difficult to get in there and see that place, but I think if we work in partnership with them, we can, we can expand that for special opportunities. And then maybe we can wrap some of the lunch issues, you know, with the cafe and Frank Lloyd down there for a destination-type place, event. Great.
Thank you. Nice job.
Yeah.
Nice job.
What kind of feedback did you get from the antique shop owners? I'm sure they appreciate us.
Yeah.
Reaching out and working with them.
They're really excited. They said this is a great, great idea. They're happy to do it. A lot of the newer ones that I've spoken with, they've jumped right on board, so we'll see how it goes. I'm excited for it.
Now, you're gonna have the, the starting point of Jamie's with, with, with all the materials. Where else can they get the maps from if they wanna?
Um, we'll, yeah, we'll distribute them to the other stores, so they'll be available there as well. I believe, depending on what we print, we'll also distribute them to other CVBs as well and whatever else.
And you'll be at the Visitors Bureau, obviously?
Yes. Obviously, yes, they will be at the Visitors Bureau. Yes, you can pick them up there.
And, and then we're gonna have them digitally online?
Right. Downloadable.
Yeah, we can easily put it online.
Anything like that, we should, we should put into a, you know, into a media format that they can, they can self-help. So, PDF file, maybe they just wanna print it out and be done with it rather than having to go actually pick up the map, as long as they get the materials. So, certainly I'd like to see all that available and downloadable.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're doing great work. I think the important thing is creating a buzz about Lorraine County and, and getting folks to say, boy, something's going on in Lorraine County. I keep hearing about Lorraine County and, and coming over here, trying different things. But, but I think it's also good for people in the community and the county itself to find out that, wow, these places are actually here and we should check them out and hopefully call their friends in neighboring counties and bring them in. And so, it's, it's just really thrilled and excited about the, the energy and, and the programming that's taking place. We're really doing a, a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cortez.
Just wanna thank the City of Auburn for passing the Stormwater, Don's still here, the Stormwater Ordinance this week and joining the County Stormwater District. You wanna give like thirty seconds quick on that? Very pleased to get that announcement. It's been a long slug. They're, they're great to work with, but they're, they're very precise.
Right.
But the new city manager down there stepped things a little further, a little harder on it and, and so we finally concluded, so.
Good morning, Board, and thank you. Monday night, Oberlin City Council actually approved the last three pieces of legislation. It took a total of, I believe, six to create a stormwater utility. The most important one, from our perspective, was actually they approved legislation requesting to partner with our storm district. And by doing that, and in the near future, assuming that we would approve that partnership, we would, the City of Oberlin and their utility would see over three hundred thousand dollars in savings from, of, cost avoidance by using our billing system and continuing to work with us on the co-permittee, where they're actually working with us to administer the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. This is a project that we actually started in two thousand twelve, near the end. Took a step forward and they became a co-permittee. They've been seeing a savings of probably twenty thousand plus a year on that. And then we've been working on their stormwater utility and their fee. So, it's taken a little bit of time, but they've been thorough. They've dotted every I, crossed every T, and they have been a, a good partner in working with us and learning from things that we've experienced if we, as we have gone on. And I look forward to continuing on behalf of the Board to work with them and implement this fully. Their first collection, their first cash for the utility would arrive in, or collected in January and they would see that, those funds in February, March, when the funds are dispersed.
And of course, we, we actually advanced all the funding to get them up and running.
Yes.
A few years ago and we're starting now to recoup the, the advances on that funding to their fee. So, it was really good. I thought we would start with a smaller entity in Auburn, but Auburn demonstrated the willingness to collaborate early on. Don's done a yeoman's job out there with those folks as well as, as Mark Ruffner, as your, as your sidekick. It's, it's, it's been a, it's been a really good process. I'm pleased to tell you now that we've had considerable interest from South Amherst Village.
Yes.
Wishing to work with us. And I, I think over the next few years, we'll see slowly but surely, we, we will bring more people into the fold that the Stormwater District, at least in the southern end of the county, does not just encompass the corporate area, but also the villages as collaborators. The water's gotta go through the villages. It's gotta go through Auburn. A lot of it goes through Auburn. So, I'm pretty excited, even though it's, it doesn't sound like much to us, it's, it's a major accomplishment to have concluded this. So, once again, thanks to city manager, city council in Auburn and Don's work and we'll let you know about the village soon.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good work.
We already had a long morning, so I'll, I'll actually yield the council, but Jen escaped the room too quickly. I wanted to talk a little bit about the best of Lorraine County coming up in July and our participation there, because I've given her certain authorizations on what to do there. So, I may have to pull her back in next week and, and get that presentation. I didn't realize they were, were so boring that they had to escape the room that quickly. So, next week we'll have something to present on that. Thank you.
Ms. Ernest?
I was on vacation last week, so I don't have any reports.
You weren't here last week?
Welcome back.
Didn't even notice it, Jerry.
Wow. Poor Jerry.
Tough crowd, tough crowd.
I miss that Jerry. Commissioners are sending a retirement proclamation, Dave Timko, twenty-one years of service. Clerk's, I don't have anything. Commissioners report? Uh, no report this morning.
Yeah, quiet week, but congratulations to the Keystone Wildcats ladies for a state championship.
There you go.
They did a great job. And then also condolence to Ralph Barry Olson's family. He passed away in the last day or so. Longtime OD JFS employee, really involved in the community, the kids, coaching. Ralph is just a great guy and lost his battle with cancer, so sorry to see that. End of my report.
And I would echo, congratulations Keystone Wildcats, winning a state championships. Not the easiest thing in the world to do. They've always been an ongoing contender and congratulations to them. Had the opportunity to attend the fiftieth anniversary luncheon for the Lorraine County Mental Health Board. Dr. Kathleen Kern doing an amazing job over there. The speaker was, wow, very inspirational. Kevin Hines, this is a gentleman who actually jumped from the Golden Gate Bridge, survived that jump, and was also able to walk later on. But was battling bipolar disorder and I guess after he jumped off the bridge, he immediately said, I don't really wanna die. So, but he had a very important message about how when we see others around us who are battling mental health issues that we, you know, we are brothers' keepers and we need to reach out to them, make sure they get the proper help. Also, had the opportunity to attend a roundtable that was held by Senator Rob Portman, talking about the opioid issue and stressing the need for the business community to be more engaged on this issue. Also, church leaders are, are getting more engaged as well too. Lindsay Bowman, a parent from Wellington, told her personal story and, you know, we hear these stories throughout our community, they're just so heartbreaking of, you know, of good kids who get addicted and running the problems. And so, once again, for those in the community who think it's only the troublemakers who are involved in this whole issue, there's a lot of very good people who've become very addicted. And that's why, you know, we're really trying to step up and do everything we can to address this issue and work together in partnership with, with the partners throughout the community. Had the opportunity to attend the Communities That Care of Lorraine County. Tony Cotter, who's a Director of County Behavioral Health Authorities. He spoke about the new medical marijuana issue coming to Ohio. One of the big concerns seems to be that the marijuana being in the edible forms, still running into too many situations where kids are getting a hold of that. And then some people are trying the edibles, not realizing, takes a half hour for it to take effect. So, after ten or fifteen minutes, they're thinking they're not feeling anything yet, so they take another one and then they end up having to go to the emergency room. But it's certainly an issue that, as we said, with the dispensaries being named and everything else that we'll be dealing with in the future. And I see in Columbus, they're actually going to try to vote again today for a new speaker. I understand they need forty-seven votes due to some absences there today. I guess the way that it works, according to Ohio law, there's gonna be ten rounds of votes. And if someone doesn't get to forty-seven, by the eleventh round, whoever has the most votes becomes the Speaker of the House.
New rules, huh?
So, yeah, so.
Last man standing, eh?
Yeah. So, it's, it's, we'll see what happens today, see if we have a speaker so we can actually get some things done. We need our elections equipment taken care of.
Yes, we do.
Lots of other important issues. And that completes my report.
Commissioners, before we go further, I had, I thought I had this in my folder. I have one issue I really want to address today. Commissioners, before we go further, I, I had, I thought I had this in my folder. I have one issue I really want to address today. If we can give that to the clerk. As I've informed you, I was working on the, uh, still waiting on information on the mentoring and tutoring contracts for Job Family Services, but I want to do the summer camp program. Talked to Bob, uh, early in the week and, and I had thought I stuck it in my folder, but I didn't, and I actually said to go get it. If you would indulge me and, uh, I think this is a really important program with the Boys and Girls Club to do a great job on the summer camp. Uh, we need to keep them, you know, the youth engaged. And, and, uh, you know, they used to call these diversion activities, whatever they want to call it, uh, we need a place for them to go. And, and even just bounce a basketball and have other, other folks to, uh, other peers to be with rather than, uh, no, nowhere to go during the day.
Exactly, very important.
Plus meals.
Exactly.
Meals and stuff, too, so.
I actually ran into Mike Conover there and I, it's something I was, we were talking about it.
And Jeff King's here, if you have any, any questions. He's, he's hiding in the back, but he's, he's, he's pretty often the hide.
Fifteen minutes of fame, Jeff?
Just for clarification, what is that amount, again?
The Boys and Girls Club for the mentoring.
Yeah, or what is the amount?
So service agreement between Boys and Girls Club for their summer camp for low-income children using the Tana funds in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars from June first, August thirty first.
The one we held was like s- almost seven hundred thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, and I've got some answers on that and getting ready to, probably next week. But I still had some concerns and that's not as important, I think, as this one, to get this thing rolling. We can catch up with the, the mentoring and the tutoring contracts, but, uh, maybe Jeff wants to speak to it.
We're looking to start next Monday and they'll serve up to nine hundred children in Lorraine County. And one of the most important things, I believe, is the food issue. They serve three meals a day and two snacks throughout the day. They have various activities they do, field trips. And they're also gonna stress job readiness, try to get kids to see a career, you know, what they might be interested, get them going, uh, bring in firemen, policemen, accountants. So it's a very good program. They have a lot of interest in you doing it.
Any administrators, managers from the public sector?
They're number one on the list, yeah. They can't pay you, though, what?
Oh, is that what it is? That what it is? I see, I see, I see how that works. It, it's, it's a great program. The Boys and Girls Club have always been a great partner.
Yes, they have.
They do a spectacular job and all the locations, too. They, they throw a big, big net.
How many, how many kids?
Up to nine hundred, we're hoping for. A lot, a lot of times it starts off where they sign up and then drop out. But Boys and Girls Club has a pretty good percentage that stay with it longer, are involved. I think it's for ten weeks.
So he was looking pretty menacing, sitting there wondering where the contract was, and I got a little worried, so I had to say.
You wondered why he was here, huh?
I was gonna run back to bar and say, uh-oh.
Madam Clerk, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Would you like to make a motion? I already read it unless you want me to?
Yeah, I'll move.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Four correspondence.
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning?
Yes.
How are you all this morning?
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Donald Colajuk. I live at four six two Stallion Court in, uh, La Grange in Pheasant Run. Um, the reason I'm here today is, um, last year, um, on or about four twelve, twenty seventeen, the Commissioners had a meeting where three issues were discussed. They were the two resolutions for the sewer project in Pheasant Run and one was for, uh, item number resolution one twenty-five regarding the water meter, which is why I am here. Resolution one twenty-five stated very specifically to replace the water meters. There was nothing after that, no ifs, ands, buts, or caveats. After that meeting, I had, uh, several, uh, conversations and prior to, um, having the plumber out, I had these conversations with Bob Kleiner regarding my issues and concerns. Bob Kleiner, on all of those conversations, assured me that our water meter would be replaced and there would be no problem. On March fourteenth, twenty eighteen, we had the assigned plumber out to our house. He refused to replace the meter. I had Bob Kleiner on my phone when he was refusing to replace the meter. The plumber refused to talk to Bob Kleiner. The plumber called the project engineer who told him not to install the water meter. We have subsequently received a letter that was very intimidating, threatening, and harassing from your county prosecutor, David Wills. I do not appreciate being threatened and harassed when I made the arrangements to have this water meter replaced per that resolution and the failure is on the part of the Commissioners, their agents, servants, and/or assigns. I talked to Bob Kleiner again yesterday about this. I had him on speakerphone and I had a witness with me because all previous conversations were just between him and me and I am very much tired of the entire runaround I've been getting. During that conversation, Bob Kleiner said, and I quote, "He lacked intimate knowledge of the project." If this guy's running a project, why does he not have intimate knowledge of the project? Why does he not have intimate knowledge of the plans and specifications that people seem to be deviating from? He would not provide me with copies of these plans or specifications via email or get them to me so that I could review them to see why things were being changed. And things are being changed on this side, not on my side. He had no knowledge of, um, changes in the requirements, um, that the plumbing project or engineer, sanitary engineer office, or anyone else had made to the resolution. That is now getting in the way of our water meter being replaced. Um, I did speak with Teresa yesterday. She did, uh, have me contact, uh, the administrator. I did put in a call to the administrator to see if I could resolve this with him. I am still awaiting a call. I've also put in several calls to the, uh, project engineer at K.E. McCartney with no return call. Because of this, this, because this debacle was caused by the Commissioners, your agents, servants, and/or employees, and others, I and others in Pheasant Run will seek to hold you all accountable and responsible, especially considering that David Wills is threatening us with legal action because your plumber isn't replacing the meters. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike?
You have to give your name and address.
Yes, sir.
Yep, all that good stuff. Mike, tell, we know you.
It's been a long time. Um, Mike, for a thirty-five twenty year to drive Lorraine, Ohio. Uh, I'm just here for an inquiry. It, it appeared that some of it may have been answered when you fast-tracked that Boys and Girls Club contract. But, um, I run a PACE program and my youth run a summer camp for about a hundred and a hundred and fifty, uh, second through seventh graders, uh, dealing with all STEM subjects. This year we were asked to expand that program, uh, to accommodate, um, kids from Lorraine County Job and Family Services eligibility. Uh, so I, I'm aware that, um, Boys and Girls Club, I think Common Ground, Lorraine County Community Action, uh, Horizon Activity Center, they have all applied, uh, for those type of grants. Uh, school is out this week. I have a list of parents who are asking for packets and we're planning to start the eighteenth. Is there any indication, uh, it looked like one of them was just fast-tracked. We've been asked by one of the others, is there any indication as when the others may be either rejected or approved? Or did that just happen? Uh, just so I know how to proceed. I didn't apply directly, but we would be working with one of those organizations that have applied, so I was hoping to, to know where that stands, um, because I saw one of them got through today, so I just need to know for information so I know how to proceed, well, you know, myself. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion or executive session is outlined by the county administrator.
Second motion.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
This is our tenth barn. Nope, nope, sorry. This is our eleventh barn.
It got kind of boring watching the grass grow, so we thought we'd watch the paint dry.
Well, the Ohio Bicentennial Commission was, uh, was born in nineteen ninety-five, uh, by, by order of the Ohio General Assembly. They, uh, charged the Commission with the duty of celebrating two hundred years of Ohio history, culture, science. And the Commission then began the task of planning a bicentennial celebration. The goal was always to include every Ohio county in the celebration. And to do that, we really, it was a grassroots up instead of a top-down, it was more of a bottom-up approach to the bicentennial, starting with the communities. Um, and we couldn't tell, uh, Clark County what to do from Columbus, but Clark County could tell us what they had in mind for the bicentennial. So that was really the, the tack that we took when, when we sat down and said, how are we gonna plan the bicentennial? The beginnings in each Ohio county was, was forming groups in each county. And that's where our regional people came in and they helped kind of light the fire in each county for the bicentennial. And that was kind of hard, uh, back then. There was not a lot of kindling to light a fire for the bicentennial, as you can imagine, in nineteen ninety-seven and nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, so we, we said, how can we get the word out? How can we spread the message of all things bicentennial? One of the original regional coordinators, her name is Nicole Moretti. Nicole is a wonderfully, uh, creative person from, uh, Megs County, down in the Appalachian section of Ohio. We're, they were at a meeting and Nicole, out of the blue, said.
Barns, barns make a lot of sense in my district. Can't you see this logo all over barns in rural counties all over Ohio?
And, uh, about the next thought everybody had in their mind was, great, how do we paint a barn?
The general consensus of the office was, if we could figure out how to do it, we would try it. But I called paint stores and I called all these places and nobody seemed to know how to do that anymore.
So Nicole was, took it upon herself to, to see if it could go. And she was in, uh, I forget what town it was.
Barnesville. And was in the Chamber of Commerce in Barnesville and somebody had to take a phone call. And like any good former journalist, I read the stuff on the desk while I waited. And one of them was at Barnesville Enterprise and on the front cover of the Barnesville Enterprise was a beautiful barn scotched painted.
In the photo was a picture of a barn and on the barn was a logo, uh, of the Ohio State University painted by a, an, at that time, nineteen-year-old kid.
And I didn't know, but my, uh, my grandfather snapped a picture of it. And, um, he took it to Barnesville and had it developed. And then he took it over to Barnesville Enterprise. And I didn't know he was doing this, but, uh, they saw a picture of it and liked it, uh, well enough to put on the front page of their Barnesville Enterprise.
And, uh, she took that front page, she immediately called the, the Ohio Bicentennial Office in Columbus and said.
I found him, I found him. He's real and I'm in Barnesville.
It fell into, into place with Nicola coming down at the right time because that barn of ours had been on the front page of the Barnesville Enterprise.
And, uh, with that, she went off to find our barn painter.
I think we ended up, um, having conversations over the phone for the next month, on and off. And then finally I went up to Columbus and, um, we talked about, um, doing one barn in every county in the state.
Um, if you go back and look at our, our announcement of the project back then and the press releases, it was our goal was, was to paint at least one barn in each county. We didn't say we were gonna do it, because we didn't know if we were gonna do it. We didn't know if Scott was gonna do it. We didn't know if we wanted his logo on every barn. Was he good enough? Did he have the talent? Did he have the skills? Did he have the, what it took to travel from every county in Ohio? I mean, we're talking about a kid.
We had discovered Scott and we decided that we wanted to attempt this and see how it worked out. And we chose an out-of-the-way barn in Belmont County so that we could try it, not necessarily directly in the public eye, to help rent, explore the possibility.
Um, the first barn was in Belmont County because that's the county I'm from. And, um, I think it, we wouldn't have did that since it was local and close for me. And, um, I even helped pick out that barn. And in those days, we kind of had to go door-to-door to find barns because no, no one knew of it. And, um, even to describe what we were doing, I think, took a little time.
And at the end of three days, we decided it was good enough for local media. We wanted some improvement before we released it statewide. And if we would make a decision to do that, um, it might come at a later time. We invited all the local media, but the Wheeling Register was one of the papers that came. They took a fantastic picture of the barn and they were proud of it. They put it up on the AP wire and the next morning we were on the front page of the Cleveland Plain Dealer.
And, and that's kind of how it began. It began in a very, I like to say we were Madison Avenue geniuses and knew that sure, we were gonna have great media attention and, and barn groupies and, and all that has happened. But it was pretty hit and miss at that point. We didn't know how this project would pan out and if it would even be more than a one-barn project. Nearly two thousand barn owners have, have applied to have their barns receive the logo. Now, we can't do two thousand barns. We're doing one official barn in each county. So the selection criteria is, we have three things that we look for.
Barns that are made out of wood, ones that are in a good condition. That makes my job a lot easier. And barns that are on a high-traveled road so people can see them.
Each coordinator will go out and look at the barns that have applied to have the logo. In some counties, it could be as few as twenty. In others, it could be as many as fifty. Uh, but they will go out and, and actually look at the barn and see if it meets our criteria. The part of the project that, that's often overlooked is the part of the project that makes the project possible. That's the person working over my shoulder right now.
Well, uh, you know, growing up, I never, I don't remember sitting in the classroom saying, uh, when I grew up, I want to be a barn painter.
He, he just loves art of all kinds and so he experimented, of course, on our barn. But, um, we, we enjoyed everything that he did.
We could not do this without Scott Hagan. And not just because of his skill with a paintbrush. That's what everybody knows. I know Scott Hagan as a person. I've worked with Scott Hagan and Scott Hagan has become my friend.
The story I always tell to everyone is this. I said a prayer for Scott, um, when he got out of school, that God would find him something in art, because that's what he, his love was in art. So with tears streaming down my face, I prayed for him to find something. And I never dreamed it would be this big. And this is what God did for Scott.
He is a wonderful ambassador for the state of Ohio and really is our true, our only true statewide ambassador. He travels to every county, representing the Bicentennial Commission.
But the people everywhere seem to be really awesome people, really willing to help you. I remember needing directions on several occasions and I remember a guy, uh, I just pulled over and asked for directions and, and, um, he said, I'll tell you what, I'll just, he'd just follow me and I'll run you right down there. And I know he's busy doing something else, but just things like that. I mean, I'll never forget that kind of thing.
He does it as a professional. He is a wonderful person to work with.
Well, the first interview I had was in Belmont County. I remember that pretty well. That was on my birthday. And, uh, I looked into the camera and I thought of the long haul he was gonna have, eighty-eight barns. And it just sounded like so much. And so I remember telling them on the camera, I said, you know, I just hope that everybody out there. will take good care of Scott. And I feel that they will. And I just felt like there's a lot of good people out there. I know there are. And I know he's going to come home and tell me about a lot of these, which he did. And I want to thank those women who put him up, because they had no idea who he was. They didn't know what he really was all about. And, you know, it's hard to trust people anymore. But he had a lot of nice places to stay, and I really am grateful. I'm grateful for those people that put him up. I appreciate it so much.
He is dependable. He's hardworking, honest as the day is long, a consummate gentleman, wonderful with the public. And he's 25 years old. What are the chances of that? I mean, we turned a 20-year-old kid loose on the state of Ohio, and we are much the better for it. I can't say enough about working with Scott. Now, any of the barn followers, there are so many of them out there, have probably noticed Scott's technique, how it has changed and how he would be the first to admit that it's improved from that first barn in Belmont County.
I know that the first few barns were pretty hard with that big script "O." And I had a lot of trouble with the big "O." And the first year and year and a half, I'd mess around for hours trying to get that big "O" right.
His technique has gotten so much better. And the style has gotten better and changed. It's much bolder. His lines are bolder from the way he does Ohio to the almost perfect lines of the bicentennial, the way he writes it. The logo flows much freely now. It's not as stiff on a surface.
Well, I never really had any form of art training. Or people always ask me, how long did you go to college? Or that. I didn't go to any art school or anything like that. I just kind of learned it for myself. My mother has a lot to do with that, and her mother, because they have artistic talent as well.
He approaches each barn the same way, looks for the same types of characteristics. Is there a window in the way? Are there vents on each side? A lot of barns, you know, they were working farms, so they need to vent the heat out of the top of the barn. So if you're storing hay or something, so they're going to have vents. They're going to have windows. They might have a door to use to access the top part of the barn. These are all things that he looks at when he approaches a site, when he sees the site for the first time.
What usually happens is the bicentennial will send me a picture of the barn. And in that way, I kind of know what I'm going to be dealing with when I go there.
He looks for the type of wood. He prefers a wider board.
This is a real nice surface to work on as far as barns go, because it's real flat and are big boards. And it's, I can, the detail's a lot easier to do on a nice barn like this.
The tongue and groove gives him fits. He's always muttering about tongue and groove.
A lot of times, I'll get barns that are, I call it tongue and groove surface. And there's a groove about every two inches. And that makes it, that was much fun to do, because you've got to get in there with your brush, and then it wants to run down all those grooves.
But the proof is in his work. And if you go back and look at his, the barns that are tongue and groove, they are finely detailed. He really takes pride in his work. He will not rush, although I've tried to move him along sometimes. And sometimes I try and slow him down.
A barn can take as many as three days and as little as one day to do. Depends on the size of the barn, conditions it's in when I get there, that sort of thing. If the barn side needs painted, you know, that's going to have some time.
But he really takes a lot of pride in what he does. And it's evident in all 88 barns. They're magnificent. And I think it's because it's the patient way and the professional way that he approaches each barn. One of the most interesting components of this are the barn, heck, I'll call them barn groupies, that follow Scott Hagan from county to county to county. I mean, let's face it, they're coming out to watch paint dry.
Well, let's see. I've only got five more to go. So what, 83? I see. 74. Uh-huh. And next week, we're going to do seven up in the northern counties, Lorraine, Erie, and there. And then after that, we'll almost be up with Scott.
That'll make us 64, I think, of the 88.
We've got nine barns that we've spotted. We've got pictures of seven. And so this makes our 10th barn.
Seventy-some. But, and we've got this one to get yet, and then two on the way home.
Clinton County, Montgomery County, Ashland County.
Marion, and Mauro, and Logan.
One time, we drove like 14 hours, and we only get, you know, like seven of the barns. So usually, it's just to go get the barns and then back home again.
Jackson County, Ross County.
It was amazing to us. I mean, they're, you know, planning trips to go to different barns and all these things. And they all had shirts. We're like, whoa.
And this all got started with me at the painting of the Miami County barn. I was born in that county. So I thought it was interesting that I could see that be painted. So we went up and spent two days, and it was pretty much weather like we've been having in the '90s, and hot, but it was wonderful. The second day when he finished, they had homemade ice cream and cookies shaped like the state of Ohio. And so that was really a nice, it was a lot of fun. It was a fun time.
I saw my first one in Tuscaloosa, number 11. That was in October of 1998. And from there, I just, I couldn't believe how neat they all were.
I said, how do I get addresses for these? And she said, oh, we can send you all that. So she sent me up to date, the 67 that had been painted.
We took off, and we started doing it. And as more that we did, the more we enjoyed it. We got to see different places of the state that we probably would have never have gone before, ride roads that we would have definitely ever been on before. And as we started seeing more and more barns, it became interesting to see the different paintings. Although the emblem and symbol is the same, it's always got a little bit of flair to it, a little variety. And it was really a good time for us.
We tried to do seven barns in a day. And we would sit down the night before and plan our trip. And I had a list of everything. We go this road, this road, right, left. And so it took all the work out of it when we went to photograph the barn. We always went to the door, asked for permission, if it was all right if we photographed. A lot of times, we didn't find people at home, but a lot of times, we did. And that was the most wonderful experience, talking to those people. And they sent us home with wonderful stories, a lot of laughs. And one barn, one couple even sent us home with a basket full of produce out of our garden.
The one in Muskegon. It was way, way back in. And when we pulled up there, the man and lady were in their golf carts. They were going, I guess, back to the barn. And they were so nice. They stood there, and they got out of the cart, and they talked to us probably about an hour and a half. And it was really nice.
Yeah, we're barn groupies. When you pull into a barn, and there's 200 people there, I guess you've got to consider yourself one of them.
What makes otherwise normal, hard-working, everyday Ohioans drop everything they're doing, drive thousands of miles over the five-year history of the project to sit and watch Scott paint a barn? To take photos of Scott painting a barn?
They're all, all of them are different. I mean, you know, different colors and the way he paints them. It's really great.
My husband wasn't real red-hot when we first got started with the idea. But as we went along, he's had as much fun as I did, because he loves to visit. And he loves to visit the older generation. And we're finding a lot of those with these farms and barns.
Everybody's been very, very friendly. And we've had a lot of neat experiences. Usually, it's hard to leave because they're so nice. They want you to stay and enjoy the time.
It's been great. We've met such good people. And talking to them is just something else. I mean, all of them have been so nice. And Scott really has really been nice. I mean, he's signed a lot of papers for me and pictures for me. And he's a great guy.
And I'll ask these people, where are you traveling from? And they'll say, Licking County. And I'll look on my map, and heck, that's an hour and a half away, or two hours, or three hours, or four hours. These people are going to those barns.
We're over 5,000 mile. And by the time we do next week, and maybe a few more around, the Southern Toyota and Lawrence yet, we'll probably, it'll be over six.
Oh, boy. About 9,500. That would be going, you know, going and coming. You know, getting them.
There was a lady in Shelby County that called. And she did know she could make it. I said, well, it's going to be a nice project. Well, she called me back to tell me that she would be here. She didn't have to do that, but she just felt like she needed a call and tell me she was going to be there. The barn enthusiasts, I think they've taken ownership of this project. They're very proud of what they've done and very proud of their scrapbooks.
I have a book over here. I have a book. They're all in there, up to date.
Jealous if somebody's got a photo of the Wood County barn before it was touched up, and a Wood County barn after it was touched up.
I'll probably be working on it five years from now. I love it.
They trade them back and forth. And when did you get that? And have you been to Sandusky? And have you been to Lucas? And have you seen the yellow barn in Cuyahoga County? Or the black barn in Hamilton County? And, oh, it's hard to find. You won't be able to find it. The directions are terrible. We get that call a lot.
Some of these places to get to are a real challenge.
And I'm looking and looking and looking. And he's saying, did you see it? Did you see it? Of course I didn't see it, or I'd have told him.
We didn't know where we were at, because we knew the barn was around, you know, that area somewhere.
So I'm looking and looking and looking.
We wasn't even anywhere near and where we were supposed to go. So he showed us this little road to go to, and it was really, really way back in.
I've always described the whole thing as a scavenger hunt, because the directions are never perfect. Some of them aren't very good.
As I tell people that call the office, the directions are purposely vague because it adds to the thrill of the hunt. There's a scavenger hunt quality to it.
Well, it's definitely a thrill, because sometimes you've been looking for a while.
I'm often asked, why is this project taking on